TCAPS Board Finance and Operations Committee meeting for Thursday, July thirty first. I call this meeting to order. The committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch live Board Committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Is there any public, the committee has decided this time for public comment.
No barriers, no public comment.
Committee Chair defer to Christine. Thomas Hill?
Yes, so Dave Nielsen is here. If you want to come up to the podium, please, with our audit firm, Manica Steresen. So they're right in the middle of pretty much finalizing our audit. There's still work to do after the site visit. We'll give you a full report out typically either November or December on how we ended the year. And so I just asked him to come kind of explain the process, what they look for. They always ask Board Finance and Operations Committee if they have any concerns that they should be paying attention to because they are hired by the board. So I'll let Dave kind of walk through where we're at, what the process looks like, and kind of open it for questions.
All right. Morning, guys. Appreciate that. Yeah, the audit teams right next door working on the annual, working on the annual audit. So we are here working through things. Couple of required items that we do need to talk about this morning. That's normal communication that we would have with the board from the audit process. As you're aware, we are auditing the 2025 Annual Conference of Financial Report. So the act first would be the act here. Congratulations again for receiving this certificate of excellence for last year. It's always a great achievement. Certainly a testament to the level of detail that staff put into financial statements this year. Audit is still due November one, as Christine alluded to, so we will work towards that due date. As part of the audit, we are reviewing internal controls. So we come out in June to do our preliminary fieldwork each year. As part of that visit, we do our internal controls, our fraud risk assessment, and then as much of the federal compliance audit or single audit as we can. This year, we are testing the Title I Part A program. That's the major program for the single audit. So last year, we tested the child nutrition cluster, did not have any findings. The district is still considered a low-risk audit team. So this year, we'll be testing Title I Part A. So far, nothing to report there, which is a good thing. If we had something to report, that means something was not in compliance with the standards. I mentioned internal controls. So during our preliminary fieldwork visit, we do look at the key controls that are in place for these significant transaction classes that are present in the financial statements. So you might ask, well, what are the significant transaction classes? It would be bank reconciliations, cash receipts and revenue, cash disbursements and expenses, and then payroll. Payroll is the biggest expense, pretty much. So in terms of payroll, we break that down by salary employee, hourly employee, and federal employee. So an employee that's charged to a federal grant. Within each of those classes, then, we're looking at the key controls that are in place. So not every control, but just the key controls. And we're looking for evidence that that control has been performed throughout the year. So by doing those walkthroughs, we're able to gain an understanding of the internal control system. We don't actually test controls to the point where we can offer an opinion on them. But we do have to gain an understanding we're required to by our standards. So that's why we do those walkthroughs. We do, I mentioned, we do some fraud risk assessment testing as part of our preliminary visit. So that was done in June. We follow it up when we're out here for our final fieldwork. So really, what that does is it allows us to gain an understanding of the controls that are in place to help minimize the potential of any unauthorized disbursements or things like that. So what we're doing, and that is, it's a risk that's present in every audit, is it's called management override of controls. What we're doing in response to that risk is we're getting a copy of the check register for the year. We're looking for gaps in the check sequence. That could indicate a missing check. Nine times out of ten, it's because it was voided. But for that one instance of a missing check that is not voided, we're certainly looking for support to make sure that that is a proper gap, gap in the sequence. The other items, other types of tests that we do in response to that risk are journal entry testing. We're required to do that by our standards. We're picking a sample of journal entries posted during the year. We're looking to see are they properly supported, reviewed, and approved. We look at electronic payments. Certainly, those should follow a similar control process as a normal AP check. So we want to make sure controls are in place for electronic payments. Key employee salaries, that's certainly an area we look at. We want to make sure that those that are in a position to potentially influence payroll are being paid what they are supposed to be paid. P cards, that would probably be the last main area that we test in our fraud risk assessment testing. We're looking at the purchase cards. We're picking a sample of a couple of months. And then within each of those two months, we are picking a sample of employees and looking at their purchase card and the related receipts for that month to make sure there are no unauthorized purchases. So that, that gives you a little bit of background behind what we do in terms of the internal control testing, in terms of the fraud risk assessment testing, and the single audit piece of it. So that's really the main goal behind our preliminary fieldwork visit. And I don't have any issues to report this morning. So so far, the audit is going very well. Wanted to mention that. Let's see here. Couple of other items to talk about. In terms of accounting standards, we do have one new standard that is applicable this year. That's GASB one oh one. Some of you may have heard that term before in this room. Deals with compensated absences. So I believe the last accounting standard that dealt with compensated absences was GASB sixteen. So it's been a few years in between GASB sixteen and GASB one oh one. The idea behind GASB one oh one is to really modernize the standard to include all forms of PTO. The district has done a very nice job in the past with the compensated absences accrual. And I should mention that that accrual is only at the full accrual government-wide basis financial statements. So it's not your general fund, it's not the operating funds, it's the full accrual financial statements. That's where you'll see the impact of it. So it's expanded the definition of compensated absences to include all forms of PTO. In the past, most districts would record that liability based on the expected retirement payouts. So, or terminal leave, if you will. Now, we've got that piece of it, but we also have personal time, right, or sick time. So districts could have a various number of different forms of PTO. And that piece of the liability is really based on time earned but not used. So even though it may not be paid separately from payroll, it will be utilized in the future, or at least a portion of it will be. Right? So you really do have a liability at the full accrual basis financial statement. So a little bit of background on GASB one oh one there. Let's see here. Oh, so I mentioned earlier, there is, there was a risk with management override of controls. That's present in every audit. The other risk that's present in every audit is improper revenue recognition. So what we do in response to that risk, we confirm state aid, property taxes, and federal grant payments. We feel like between the three of those, oh, also payments coming from the ISD. Between those four sources of external confirmations, we cover roughly ninety percent of the revenue. And from there, we do substantive analytical procedures on the remainder of revenue. So that's how we respond to the risk of potential improper revenue recognition. Capital projects, that is certainly a big area as well with your district. So we are testing the bond expenditures in accordance with Section thirteen fifty one A. Feel like that's pretty important to the public. They are the ones that voted on the bonds. So, excuse me, we are testing a very high percentage of those expenditures. We do most of it during our preliminary visit, and then we complete the testing during our final fieldwork visit. So this week and next week. No, no issues noted with our testing so far. So that's always good to report. I know you've got a new bond. It was issued in March, I believe, of twenty twenty five, eighty-two million. So far, about fifteen million has been spent of that bond. We have audited a very high percentage. Looks like the sale of Bertha Boss was official during the year, so we did look at the proceeds for that sale. And then a couple of other items to hit on here. When we do our audit procedures, particularly when we're out for final fieldwork, we utilize a concept known as directional auditing. So what that is, is essentially, we need to understand what the district budgeted and where we came in for the actual results, and why there's a disconnect between the two, if there's a disconnect. So what we do is, so for example, your district budgeted a draw from fund balance of about three million. Actual preliminary results, we're not done with the audit yet, are about an add to fund balance of approximately five hundred and eighty thousand. So we've got a variance of about three point five million there, and we'll want to understand why that variance exists. Now, part of that is part of the normal, I would say, conservative budgeting practices that your district employs. But the rest of it, we're going to want to understand why that difference occurred. To our understanding so far, there's just been a number of favorable variances that have occurred in the district. So that allows us to sort of directionalize our auditing procedures. So if you've got a draw from fund balance of three million, you came in at an add of about five hundred and eighty thousand. From our perspective, you wouldn't want to add more revenue. So we're looking at journal entries potentially posted after we've started our audit procedures, right? You wouldn't want to add more revenue, and you probably would be looking to add expenses, right, to get closer to that three million dollar draw. So that gives you an idea of how we utilize directional auditing in our procedures. Again, we're here this week. We'll be here next week. I've got the board meeting on my calendar for November ten, I believe. So, so far, the district, Christine and her staff have certainly responded to every one of our requests timely and accurately. We really appreciate all their help. Potentially Wes's last go around here with the audit. So looking forward to one last run with him here this year. But anyway, I'll open it up for questions if you have any.
Is the five eighty new?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And to be clear, the three million draw was from the original budget, was before we had our budget. So our amendment was at, amendment was at one point five, and I think we're right around seven hundred thousand and carryover at the site level.
Probably a little higher than that.
Higher than that, yeah. So we let some of our sites carry over FTE and budget. And we never know, we can't predict what they're actually going to spend. So it ends up being in our favor when we close our books, but next year, we reallocate it to them. So it makes that seem a little bit worse. And it's kind of an every-year Peter Tatter, if you will.
I agree.
Question about property taxes. Your audit, does it cover the dispersals from the state on our state allocations? Are you actually verifying that, that amount as well?
It is part of it, yep.
Okay. And that's a flow-through, right?
Yep.
Taxes.
Yep, because those, the state revenue and the property tax revenue play hand in hand.
Yeah, okay. And as far as PTO, maybe this is more board policy, but is that a carryover on PTO?
So employees that receive vacation time can carry over five days. On personal business days, normally there's two. If they don't use those, they rolled a sick time, and sick time does carry over. The, the thing that I think is going to be quite substantial on our government-wide statement is the compensated absence. We have a lot of people that have a lot of sick hours that never get paid out for those. So it, you know, again, it's what we're required to do, but is it an actual liability to the district? Not so much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we have administrators that, a couple thousand hours, I mean.
Yeah, we're going to see those liabilities go up, I think, for every district across the state. I would be surprised if they don't, put it that way.
And those carryover hours, they continue to carry over year after year after year, or is there some deadline to those?
Yeah, the sick carryo, carries over year to year. The vacation time every year, you can only carry over five. So the maximum you can ever have as a carryover is five. It doesn't accumulate.
All right.
So when you say it doesn't accumulate, meaning every year you can't add another five?
Right. It's five, period.
Period, okay.
After every close of business.
And where are we on the retirement fund? I mean, that used to be a black hole.
Please, please educate us on the retirement fund.
Uh, what I can tell you is the net pension liability did come down again for this year. Excuse me. And that's measured by the state as of September thirty, twenty twenty-four. So that liability then rolls forward to your June thirty, twenty twenty-five financial statements. That did decrease again this year. I'm seeing some positive movement there. The OPEB piece of the liability, that actually is still an OPEB asset as of the end of the year. So.
Can you say what that acronym means?
Other post-employment benefit liability.
Thank you.
Yeah. So to me, they are making progress in that area. It's still a large number that is going to continue for. It's supposed to be fully funded, I think, within the next seven years or so.
Twenty thirty-two is when I thought the year was. But there's always talk about the state borrowing, bonding that, and extending the bill out to be able to, you know, steal from tomorrow to pay for today. Governor Snyder, when he was office, really kind of put a structure in place to start paying this down. But every year, there's, there's just this ability that the legislature has talked about to go, well, we could, you know, find that, and we could extend the liability to twenty fifty, and we now have money to do something. So with the roads and all that, who knows what's going to happen yet.
Yeah.
But just for clarity, we don't really control.
At all.
That, that's done at the state level.
Nope. All that information comes from the state. Yeah. Yeah, good question.
And you know what that percentage is right now?
Not off the top of my head, though. I could look at it, but I'm going to do.
That would be useful for the board meeting, maybe when we.
Oh, yeah.
So we know what that liability might be.
About, was it two or three years ago, they started making us put the OPEB in our, or the, the retirement, I'm sorry, the, the retirement? Yeah. Debt?
Yep.
And that goes on our, in our books, our portion of that debt from the state.
Our portion of the liability, which we're not actually liable for.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not, it's much like the compensated absence. It's now way skewed our government-wide statements.
It, it just, but it's massive to look at, but we do have to do that.
Does that then affect our bond rate?
Hasn't so far at all. You know, I think they recognize it's everything, everybody across the state. You know, so I know, again, Christine, you can talk a little bit, when we had our standard and Porter's review.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't come up. They understand what's going on with the state of Michigan. And I mean, there's actually no liability for TCAPS to actually pay that if the state doesn't. So.
Except for a bunch of retirees.
Yeah, a bunch of retirees.
Exactly.
Other than that.
Other than that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me this morning.
Thank you.
The last thing is that Dave's available. If any board member has a question or has a concern that they'd like to talk to him outside of this meeting, I can give you his contact information.
Yep, I'm always available. Well, always is relative, but yeah, I'm available, certainly. Thanks for having me this morning. Yep, I'll be next door if you have any questions or comments. Feel free to bug me.
Thank you.
See ya.
All right. Draft committee meeting minutes from July tenth, twenty twenty-five. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or are there any changes?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Closed. They are approved. Informational items.
Yeah, so we're going to start off with the train performance management update. This is a really big contract for our district, thirty-six million dollars, thirty-three million with a three million dollar contingency. I asked Paul to report out kind of where we are by trade, and then also how we are financially, how much money we've actually spent. So they are cruising along. They're getting a lot of work done. They actually moved some of the boilers that were scheduled to be done next summer to this summer because they had the trades available to do the work. So they.
Yeah.
I'm shocked at how fast it's going. And it was really good. We had asked them to separate the trades, like, let's not have one HVAC vendor. If you could have two because of our size. So they did that. So that's been very helpful.
So the numbers you're looking at are through the June payout. I just got July's last night. So these are, these are through June. You can see overall through the project, they're about forty-eight percent complete. We've spent a little over thirteen million. By the time this payout goes through, it'll be around sixteen million. So that balance to finish will drop down, and we'll have a higher percent to complete. On the contingency side, with change orders, we started out at four point seven. We've allocated two point seven to change orders throughout the project. We've got a two million dollar contingency remaining on the project.
Yeah.
Now, when you talk about the contingencies, the, those are new contingencies allocated, the two point seven?
No, the, the initial contingency with the project that was allocated was four point seven million. And out of that four point seven million, we're spending two point seven right now.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And I, I said three, but I forgot we allocated an estimated amount for Saban because Train is doing the Saban renovations.
Okay.
For HVAC.
And you keep those under change orders because of, that's where the contingencies come from?
Right.
Okay.
Changes to the project as we go along.
I was confused.
We request they do the work, get a quote, and approve it or deny it.
Okay.
So we, we.
So we control the spending of that. Got it.
We do control the spending. We, we come across a couple of things. There was an air handler at East Middle School that needed to be replaced. And that is part of, so we added that to the project. The unit vents at Oak Park, we asked them to replace the boiler at Traverse Heights as we got going with that renovation project. The existing boiler was determined to be inadequate to support the addition and that, so we threw that in. So there's things that have come up as we've gone along. That money does include what Christine was talking about, the work at Saban. The change, we treated it as a change order to the project.
And Paul, the lighting component, is it, that's a electrical contractor, that's not savings that we've been accruing from TCLP, for instance?
Correct. The, the electrical contractor is actually working with our suppliers and the utilities. Utility companies to get us rebates and incentives as we're going along. Actually, I had a meeting with Consumers Energy yesterday, and they're going to help us look at more incentives and rebates from what we're doing. But no, that's a percentage of work that's complete.
So this is the one building that has not been a lot touched yet. You were just, we walked in and talking the other day.
Yeah.
But you'll go across buildings and see all the new LED lighting all over the place.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the company is doing that. It's called Hema Lighting. They're, they're flying. They're just flying through the buildings.
It's been nice during the school year, they did most of their work on second and third shift to not disrupt the school day. And now during the summer, they're able to get more into the buildings, other than here.
As far as Central Grade School, are we doing any of this work? Are we just going to ride with the existing boiler system?
It's, we just started this. We had a meeting this last week to start reviewing the systems for the building, mechanical, electrical, and that. We'll have Train review the design on that so that we're all compatible with what we're doing for the new building. I say new building, for the renovated building at Central Grade. They'll be involved with that.
Yeah, they're, they'll be operating more as a consultant. They may do the work, that's just not part of this contract.
So we're not touching Central Grade School on this contract at this point?
No, no.
No, not at all.
It's completely part of the big renovation, and there's.
Be demoing the big boiler down there?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Somebody will.
Somebody will, but.
No, but Trinidad is part of this.
No.
No.
And, and that's a lot because we.
Eric is still traumatized from that.
We could make it as like a lawn ornament. People would appreciate it.
A sauna, maybe?
A place rupture.
Need a big lawn.
That and the incinerator.
I know, I'm like, how are you going to get this out of here?
Right.
Oh, dear.
And, and just, this is some of the work that we're doing that we probably don't talk about all that much. The unit vents in all the elementary schools that are being affected or being removed, they were the ones that were just under the windows. Unit vents in all the elementary schools that are being affected or being removed, they were the ones that were just under the windows. And that just threw the heat up the windows and, and drew direct outside air without any filtering or anything. The new units are vertical, and they're actually gonna be ducted off the top of the distribution systems. Throughout the room, rather than just at one point, so we'll have a better air distribution going on, and we'll be supplying high and returning low.
So for those teachers in their classrooms who might have had. Storage cabinets, that kind of thing, are they being sort of alerted that those?
We're replacing them.
Replacing them, yeah.
So you see the gap right there, they're gonna add cabinets to make it all one large cabinet.
This is where the unit vent used to sit. So it was taken out, and these cabinets that were, these uh bookcases were over here, were slid into place, and we're gonna fill that gap. In between, so they're not losing any honey.
It's just relocated.
In fact, they might be gaining an extra couple of feet of, of bookcase.
But yeah, but we've been in contact with all the principals so that they can let their staff know.
That's good, and there's, there's probably some teachers who might wanna come in during the summer and reallocate whatever they'd had there.
And we've had, um, our facilities director, Rayanne, has been out, and um. They've toured all these sites to make sure where they're going and what needs to be added back in, so. And then, uh, just a couple of other things, the, when we did the uh secure entry vestibules. On several locations, we went ahead and put uh snowmelt in at the front entries, but didn't connect them, knowing this was coming along. Uh, the boiler replacements and that, so now, as part of this project, they're connecting all that snowmelt to the new boilers.
And that's just in the entryways, it doesn't go down the sidewalk for drop offs and that.
And that's just some of the new boilers that are going in.
That's it.
Alright, thank you very much, just for clarity, the forty eight percent you said is complete, is that based on? The costs, or is that based on progress?
Uh, progress.
Okay.
So, that's just a, and that's an average, some of these are completely done. Some of the buildings are completely done, some of them aren't, so it's just an average.
So we're about halfway there.
About halfway, yeah.
In which, you know, our goal is to be halfway by, like, this fall. So, you know, with what we'll get on, we'll be ahead of schedule for sure.
But all buildings will be operational for the first day of school.
Yeah, but really their deadline is like August eighteenth, so we're continuing to push them and remind them. That's when, if they start doing open houses and teachers are back, and you need to be out of there.
And if we had some lighting or whatever, it would be second, third shift, you know, to not affect kids and teachers.
And somewhere I read, we're having, we're behind schedule on the cafeteria at Traverse Heights.
We'll get there.
That was part of this up here.
Well, it can be, we have two, uh, potential.
I've actually got it on here.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, we went from train to here.
Yeah.
It's all capital to me, I forgot.
So just, just, I'll continue on with the project. Okay, so at the partitioning project between the classrooms, uh, the picture on the left is what they used to look like. This, those were the folding wall partitions that never got used, and weren't, weren't quite sound. Um, attenuating as they needed to be, and so the other two pictures are partitions that we've. Uh, replaced them with, uh, they're right at the point, ready to finish painting them, and that, so. Way along there, out at West Senior High, obviously the circulation project, that's the bus loop you see right in the foreground there coming in. The uh roadways are ready for paving, but we've gotta wait until the curb and gutter is in. And that starts the end of next week, uh, Thursday, Friday, the curb and gutter concrete work gets started. And then the paving and striping will follow right behind that. We'll be ready for school signage and all that stuff.
Big pit there is your retention area?
Part of it, yeah, there's a, there's a system out there, one leads to the next, they feed through each other and that, so.
And Paul, um, remind us the phases of kind of what's done now and then, there's.
Sure, so the bus loop and the main entry, there'll be one main entry when school starts this year, right at Hurtner Road and that light. Uh, the bus loop will be new, and the parking and the loop on the west side of the building will be all new. The east side will be done next year. Just a couple more pictures, the, they're doing final grading out there, getting prepped for, again, curb and gutter and, and done paving. We're gonna maintain that lay down area, uh, we gotta work with uh West Senior High with Joe and that. About maybe shrinking that a little bit, but where their trailer is in the middle of the picture towards the top.
You're gonna maintain that into the school year?
Yep. Then the projects inside west, this is the restrooms at the commons, if anything's lagging, it's this a little bit. Um, there was a, the back wall of this was supposed to come out, then we found it was supporting the mezzanine above, so it couldn't come out. So we had.
Kind of figured that out beforehand.
Yeah, well, the, the existing drawings showed it as not being supported by that wall, it was a chase wall, is what it showed on the, on the building drawings. But it's not a chase wall, it's a support wall. So they've, we've caught up, they've caught up, but it was lagging a little bit, but just to give you an idea of where this is and, and the measures they've gone to, to. You know, keep dust and debris and things out, you know, some of our contractors do is build these walls and, and do the work inside them.
And it's very likely it won't be ready for start of school, but we've already talked to Joe, and he's not concerned, they'll just open the uh restrooms. Across the hall for the auditorium spaces, so.
So it'll be close, but it'll be a matter of, you know, those finishing touches to, to make it operational.
And so will you just review what was there and then what will be there, just super high level, like.
So, uh, if you were, if you were standing facing them, to the left was the girls' or women's restroom, that was a gang restroom for. Like, for a better term, and to the right was the, the boys' and men's, and, you know, just this series of fixtures behind, uh. Toilet partitions and that, so they've taken that all out, and what we're creating is uh single user restrooms in there, so. The three openings that you see right in front of you are just openings, so you walk into, the two on the end. And the one on the end here is a direct access uh to a single user restroom from the uh commons.
Can you remember, is it eight? Was that what it was, it'll have eight individual, you know, there now.
There were like.
The same number that were there.
Okay, same number, that's.
And then, and then the hand wash area and the sinks will be like an open common space.
Trying to provide a little bit better supervision into some hidden areas and upgrade finishes.
So, you know, a big difference is, it's not an area for people to just gather kids or whatever and do things that, you know, and try. So that'll all be open camera, so, you know, one person in one, one out, you know, and so very big difference.
Well, um, and this might be kind of, um, not the right time to ask this question, but, uh, like, we had once. Looked at vape detectors and that they didn't work because of the multi stall and it was too hard. But will the, will, will we retry vape detectors, like, in the toilet stalls?
Um, we've actually used new versions of them and they're working better, and we have them at high schools and the middle schools, so.
Okay.
And they will be in here.
Yeah, we piloted quite a few systems and had some difficulties, but we found one now that works really well.
Okay, I, cause I've read some new studies on some newer ones, and there's some schools downstate that are.
Last year, we did some of that, and so this will be equipped with.
Okay.
And like, and like I said, camera to be able to see down that whole thing and.
Okay.
Cameras are outside the actual stall.
Correct, they, obviously, they have to be, yes.
But they look right at the sinks, the group area where people could gather. So you can see that, and you can kind of see a little bit of the hallway going towards the stall doors, not into any of them. But again, the doors are floor to ceiling.
So, they passed the plumbing inspections on, and that, this would have been already concreted over, except that concrete, concrete truck can't come till Monday, so.
By plumbing, you mean the roughs?
The roughs, yeah. This is the other uh restrooms down around the corner between, um, C and V wings. Uh, there's a, a set that we're doing the same thing to, basically, i- if you see where the, the masonry wall here. We took out a wall that was here and had a door on it, so we opened this whole corner up and that to, uh. For access and viewing it, and we did the same thing here, turned them into single user stalls. And they'll have, uh, and this is the other side of the stairwell, they'll have a, a row of gang sinks there for, for hand wash, but. Individual users installing it.
And will we have, um, sa- sorry, I'm, uh, there, there was a lot of community, uh, input over the years on these, so. Will we have like signage, like one person at a time in these stalls, it'll be very clear that they're, they're to be wanted at a time.
Most of ours say single user restroom with ADA accessible sign on it.
And so overall, so you know, between the th- the original bathrooms, all it'll now, there'll be twenty. Individual restrooms that are available, that we don't have to lock down, we don't have to, all that from a, a component, so. Should be a great addition.
Good, thank you. It's been an issue over the years at West, for sure, so.
So, and this is, this is also at West, it's the, the Northwest Ed Services renovations we're doing for them on the second floor. They're boarded, they're getting ready for paint and finish.
This is the old robotics classroom that was upstairs.
This is the old computer lab, yeah, and that, so.
And when we say Northwest Ed, we're doing it for them, they're not putting up any money.
Cause they're paying for it.
They're paying for it.
It's part of their lease, they're, they're paying for the renovations.
Okay.
No, they're straight up, I don't, their lease is a separate thing, they're paying straight up for the renovations.
We, we do the work and bill them for their portion.
So here we are at uh Traverse Heights, um, the uh classroom addition. If there's anything that's lagging behind and won't be ready, it'll be these classrooms. And that, we're already working on, um, temporary solutions for, um, separating them, so the construction can continue. Uh, they're flying right along with this, and you can see the masonry is going up. Once we're at this point with the uh cafeteria addition, the masons will stop here and go out. And work on that piece out there, get the masonry all done, the windows are all ready to go, uh, door frames, all of that stuff, it's all. Sitting at the shops waiting to be installed, uh, right now, measurements are done, and that, so.
I would say it's not really lagging, cause we knew they weren't really gonna be ready.
Brian knew that the classrooms would probably not be there.
Push them for cafeteria, and I'm not sure why we're a little behind on the cafeteria, but.
But, um, I, I.
We're much closer.
I don't, I talked to him yesterday, he told me we're not behind on the cafeteria, right, so.
Time will tell.
He said, he said, he told me that if. If anything, we, the blinds might not be up.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
So.
I was over there earlier this weekend, there was nothing on the front.
I'll, I'll, we're probably bored on it today, I haven't been over there this morning, but, uh, they're flying, uh, they are flying, so.
I'll see the Hallmark Construction team tonight at a dinner, and I'm gonna talk to Jeff Fetterich and go, okay.
But even Brian said, like, if we had to use the gym for cafeteria for a week or two, it, it, it's inconvenient, but we can make it work. Hopefully not.
Yeah, so, cruising right along, we've got full crews over there, banging away, they got paid masonry there, and they're not leaving until they're done, so.
So if they had to do overtime, does that become a contingency item, or is that on them? Okay.
They know the schedule, know it right along, so. And then inside the classrooms, they're ready for board, uh, you can see they're, uh, moving right along with this too. And then the, there's three classrooms, three existing classrooms on the north end, where the addition, opposite the addition. That will be ready for school, um.
They're getting restrooms added to them.
Restroom in the middle, uh, between two of the classrooms and that, and they're doing floor finishes this week, and they're finishing that room up. They'll be installing fixtures shortly, so. Those rooms will be.
The little ones, yeah, that'll be a nice addition.
So these are your, for pre K or kindergarten and pre K, they're a little small for kindergarten rooms, but they'll.
Yeah, they, um, we have, um, it's not one of the GSRP rooms, right, that's the only one we didn't touch yet. They don't really have preschool per se, because we have Head Start and GSRP there, so it would be kindergarten.
So to, so to be clear, the two, two Head Start crack that we have there are in partnership with the NMCAA. They operate and run under the federal Head Start grant, and then there's one GSRP.
That's also operated by NMC.
That's also operated, there's, with the ISD, there's, and funding now goes to ISD, and there's just different partners with all of it, but. They're all our kids, you know, so that we're supporting, it's just somewhat different funding mechanisms that, and are doing that with different partners. The, the, the way it works.
And then the project out at, our office is out at facilities, we're adding a. Warehouse storage facility at the side of it, this was taken in the morning, this was in the afternoon, so. These guys are moving right along, right now, the formwork's all in place for the footings and that.
How many square feet are you adding?
We're getting, uh.
I don't know, I don't remember.
Nine, nine thousand?
Eight thousand or nine thousand.
Somewhere around there.
A thousand of it up front has climate controls, so, so for storage that needs climate control. We're not really sure yet what's going there, we have a lot of thoughts and ideas, it depends on some other decisions, but. We're anxious to get this done, cause we're struggling at Saban, now that we are vacating the classrooms to do our renovation. We have a lot of stuff that we have, nowhere for it to go.
This will go fast, though, once, once the footings are, I'm right.
The, they'll get the footings and all that in place, but the building itself is a pre-engineered steel building. It's not gonna be here till the end of September, it's on order, it's being fabricated and all that, but. It won't be here till the end of September, so. And as part of this project, we uh extended our fence line, uh, to the property to the north, where we store all of our. Um, landscape material, all the mulch and that for the playgrounds and stuff, so.
This will be helpful, we, we often find some RVs and other vehicles parked there for the weekend, so.
Oh, I thought you meant as part of the excavation.
No. So, and then, uh, too, this allowed us to take out the fence that was on the very north end of the uh facilities parking lot, so now we can expand our. Our yard out into that area, and we store things out there, like the, the parade wagons for the schools, and then that kind of stuff, so they're. They're actually now behind a fence, and we can take care of it.
Alright, so we're convinced that possibly we're going to have cafeteria operational around the first.
I don't know that I'm convinced about that. I'm hopeful, I, I'm cautiously optimistic.
Well, it's, I mean, hey, if the construction company is saying, we're trying, you know, and, and the, it's their goal.
So many factors that could impact them too, so.
Their local folks, you know, they've done a ton of work for us, so.
Well, it's nice to know all the materials they need are in.
Yeah.
Town, so we're not back ordered on windows or anything like that, so.
We never know with inspections too, so we, you know, anything could provide a little hiccup, so.
We actually had a fifty percent walkthrough inspections yesterday too, over there with the fire marshal, or the Bureau of Fire Services. And the building inspector and that, and they're on board with all the ones we're doing, so, yeah.
So we'll see.
Alright, anything further on that? And just to clarify again, the terrain is a performance contract, and we expect to accrue savings on an annual basis.
That's correct, they even have signs all over the district, I had mentioned a couple of months ago, and, you know, it's a, um. Right somewhere around three hundred and seventy five thousand years.
Guarantee the three eighty four, but we'll see, I mean, if you, look at our old equipment, we're gonna see some more substantial savings than that. That's just their guarantee, because if they don't meet that, they've gotta write us a check, so they're a little conservative on what they think we'll save, but. I'm confident it'll be substantially more than that.
It's primarily energy savings is what we're talking about.
And that does not include Central Grade, Central Grade was not a part of this project, which is probably our most inefficient building in the district, so. That'll be another huge plus on that commons, but again, not a part of the contract.
The other thing, it's not just about, uh, utilities, it's also about repairs.
Yeah, the maintenance.
The amount of hours repairing and fixing and replacing parts now that we can't get anymore is, it, um, was kind of absurd.
But when they're in place, our own maintenance staff will take over the ma- maintenance and operations of those.
But with, you know, they'll have support, the controls are all the same, district wide. Everything's gonna be in the same computer system, all of it, bo, 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 bo.
Standardization helps us quite a bit.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Uh, finance, uh, Grant Travers Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians, two percent grant, Dr. Van Weyen.
So, uh, um, each year, the Grant Travers Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians, uh, have a grant cycle twice, twice a year. Um, and, uh, different times where they, um. Um, and, uh, different times where they, um, uh, are able to take applications for grants. Um, specific to two percent of their electronic gaming revenue, um, it was agreement with the state long ago with Governor Engler. Um, that, uh, that they would provide a part of their electronic gaming, these grants to. Uh, different entities, uh, mostly municipalities, um, and schools are considered with that within. Um, a, I think it's a three county region, and so, uh, we have had a lot of luck of support, uh, from the, the Grant Travers Band. Um, and specifically our indigenous education program as well as our student support network. And so this is, uh, um, a, uh, just a, a over a hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, that we're very excited to be able to get. To provide support to our, uh, indigenous population of students. Um, some are members of the Grant Travers Band and some are not, members of others, um, other, uh, uh, bands across the, the country. Um, and so we appreciate the support and that work, um, and so, uh, this is, uh. Um, again, just, uh, an update, so with grants, you know, the, that doesn't fall under the board policy as far as that. It's only when we have donations from that standpoint, but we tend to want, like to do that. Um, and then, uh, just kind of more recently too, we did also, uh, receive another, uh. Uh, over a hundred thousand dollar grant, um, that I'll be talking about more next month, but is related to indigenous language. So we are working on, um, trying to, uh, create in a competency based. Um, a language part of our world language program for students to be able to, um, learn, uh. Um, the native language, uh, that is to our region of our, of our, uh, Grant Travers Band, uh, members, and so we're excited. We've already had a little conversations with, uh, uh, Bay College and the UP and Northern Michigan University that's actually doing teacher. Prep and certification for that program, and so, uh, so putting this, that, uh, with, uh, this grant, with that grant. As well as how it helps our student support network with our indigenous students, we're very grateful for the support from the Grant Travers Band for that.
You know, I saw, I saw the second grant in, in a Battle Creek newspaper, that's from the Native American Heritage Fund for a hundred and twenty-nine. Thousands, that's excellent.
Yep, so we're excited and that's a conversation we've had with the band the last two years of trying to create, um, you know, that. One of the things that's very, very important to, uh, our, our Native American, uh, families and, and the tribal council. Is maintaining, um, their language and, and for, uh, you know, their youth to be able to learn that from their elders. And so this is something we think we can really help with, and we're excited to be able to provide. That, um, eventually as a world language as a part of the Michigan American curriculum for our students. Um, it really has not been done, and so, um, they were very, very excited about this opportunity. So, uh, you know, we've got some work ahead of us, but we have some partners at the higher end level that I know are willing to, to do that, and so, uh. It's, uh, it's definitely an awesome program that we're excited to, to work on.
Yeah, for sure, thank you to the Grant Travers Band, that's amazing that they continue to support TCAP, so, um, really, really great, so. And I love that idea about the language, Holly always, you know, would, um, she would, you know, use her native language on.
Yeah, Ish Navy, I- Ish Navy Moan. Um, is the, the language and so, uh, um, like I said, just, it's gonna be cool, we can pull it off, and so. Um, I'm excited about the opportunity.
And what a cool thing to just educate our all students around, you know, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be available to all students as a world language when we can, you know, get it, and we're looking at a competency basis, not necessarily. An hour within our day, it, it's could be done outside, it can be done with tribal elders. And that we have components in there where students are able to do that maybe at their own pace and, and, and those elements and. Working to be able to get some certification, um, for some of our tribal elders to be able to be teachers of it under the state. Program and so, uh, like I said, a lot of work, um, you know, we've got kind of a very large umbrella, uh, uh, concept of what we wanna do with it. And this will definitely help.
So they're, just for clarity, that we're not talking about infusing this into the core curriculum in the eight hour day or whatever it is that we.
As of right now, no, and you know, one of the things we're trying to do is even with many of our classes is look at maybe some competency based. Opportunities and that, and so what would be neat for us is this would be our first one, I think, that we can see if we can design. Then I do wonder about other, you know, we only really, the only two, two, uh, you know, the, the three, I guess, Spanish, German and French. But German's available on one side and French on the other and not vice versa, right? So I do, one of the things I often bring up to our team that, uh, I'll be honest, that bothers me a little bit. Um, and, and I wonder, is there maybe some ways for kids and teachers and for us to be, be able to create something. Beyond just an online class that I, you know, for foreign language is very, very tough to do in that way, but. I wonder, is there a different way of competency based of, which can kind of be independent study-ish? But with formal with a certified teacher that, but it's not bound by the time, you know, we have certain restrictions with the State Department of Ed. That requires us to have kids six hours a day in a seat, so it's gonna take some flexibility from the state and some waivers as well. Um, to be able to pull off, so, um, this would be our first venture into that, that would be outside of that day, but. You know, if a kid could do this, it may mean that they have more flexibility in their schedule to maybe do an internship or a job shadow or whatever, so. This is putting our toe in the water to see if there's a different way for us to start being able to think about how especially high school education can be.
I love that idea, uh, even, even a virtual classroom, give or offer German and French on both sides of town, I mean, I can't, I do hear it from students and parents about. Even wanting to switch to the other side to fulfill their language, um, you know, what they're interested in, and so. Even if you had a virtual and, uh, maybe you go to a classroom with a virtual teacher from the other side of town and.
Well, as someone who grew up in a French immersion, uh, town, I mean, and virtual, I think is rough for language. But I, 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 I support this flexibility of inside the school day, sounds great.
Exactly, we got a ton to learn, you know, and figure out, but, you know, this is worthwhile, you know, cause for. Uh, to honor our community and our, our Native American population of students, and we get some resources to, to do it, to learn. So excited about it.
Yeah, the only reason I am, because I went through the process when we eliminated the elementary Spanish program and. It was not a happy time, but then budget was not a happy time either, so. Alright, um, learning enrichment, LEAP and student support, and I, I asked that this just be put on because there have been conversations about. What we do with LEAP moving forward and the kind of access we wanna provide and if we're gonna do strategic planning, I thought. The least useful to have some budgetary numbers here, so we all, we're on the same page.
So I asked Sandy, um, to give you kind of an overview of both as she does the budgets for both of those, so if you have any questions, she'll be able to answer them for you.
Yeah, good morning, um, I just wanted to start out by saying, um, we do account for our LEAP funds in its own fund. Um, it's part of our budget amendment that we go through, it's part of the community service budget. Um, it's, the program as it stands right now, um, is about an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar program. Um, we have a nine hundred thousand dollar budget for next year, I, um. Wanted to go ahead and just kind of talk through where the funding for that comes from, because I think that's important to the conversation that you guys are having. So I'll, I'll talk through the totals and then kind of dig into some of those details on that, um, and answer questions for you. Um, but from admissions and sports passes, so people actually coming to the events where, this is, um, this year's numbers, we've. Um, we brought in about sixty-three thousand dollars from that. Um, from registration, from the kids paying to participate in the program, we bought it, brought in five hundred and twenty-six thousand. Um, from miscellaneous funds, which includes concessions, advertisement, um, community partnerships when we're working. Um, with outside entities that are just running their program through our ELEO program, like asking us to advertise their program. And for the kids to participate in, we brought in about sixty-one thousand. And then the district subsidy comes into play when we have to have enough revenue to cover our total expenses for the program. Um, for this year, we had to bring in a hundred and ninety-four thousand. We, um, have, um, we had a budget of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, so. Uh, we used a hundred and ninety-four of that to subsidize this year's program. Um, to talk a little bit about the registration, I just wanted to clarify, um. We have tiered pricing for that, so that five hundred and twenty-six thousand that we bring in. Elementary has, um, different prices for second and third grade, we have different prices for, um, upper L and then. Middle school, we also have different prices as well, so, um, the average, uh. Elementary, we're around fourteen dollars and fifty cents, it goes up to fifty-eight dollars, I'm sorry, this is for second, third. Fourteen fifty for free, reduced is twenty-nine, full is fifty-eight. For four, five or eighteen twenty-five for free, thirty-six fifty for reduced, thirty-seven three for full. And then we also bring in additional revenue from, um, shared time and non-shared time programs, so if we have schools that. Aren't our TCAP's programs but want to participate in our LEAP program, so we have like Trinity Lutheran and Old Mission, those schools are. Um, part of our program, but we do charge them additional revenue to participate. Uh, we get into middle school and we're at a free rate of forty, reduced is seventy and full is one forty. Uh, we do have some extra cost if it's a bigger program like football, um, those types of programs that cost a little bit more, I just. Those are just average rates that we are bringing in, um, so we, we do subsid. The LEAP program does subsidize the difference between that free and that full pay. Um, and that is about sixty thousand dollars that the dis- that the LEAP program subsidizes for that.
That's part of the hundred and ninety-two.
That's, that's separate, so that's not really, that's not revenue that's accounted for, I'm just trying to give you a number to say. If everybody were to pay the free, or if everybody were to pay the full price, um, we would bring in additional sixty thousand dollars in revenue.
Which would reduce the one ninety-two.
Do we have any full scholarship program where the district subsidizes completely scholarships?
So we, we do have programs and I was gonna talk about that a little bit with SSN, so if there's. That's okay, um, just depending on where the funding's coming from, so in order to get funding to that base rate. So up to that free or up to that reduced rate, we do seek funding from other sources to be able to do that, so. Indigenous Ed or SSN will contribute money to get to that base amount, that free or that reduced rate, whatever that child would be. Qualifying for if they were to be applying for this and, or enrolling themselves.
And then one thing I'll add to that, that Katie had said to me is also sometimes with, like with an SSN, the kid needs shoes, cleats. Some of those kind of things, she often works to provide that.
But that would be a separate fund outside of LEAP, so this is just kind of talking about what LEAP is gonna look like, um, for next. And then for next year, we have a proposed budget of nine hundred thousand, um, just with cost inflation and other things. Um, trying to ensure that the program's built according to the programs that we have typically offered.
And what's your budgeted, um?
Next year's, um, we have a two hundred thousand dollar budget for our district subsidy.
Can you talk a little bit more about that district subsidy, so the hundred and ninety-four thousand, um, where does, like, what? Where does that come from, because you're saying that the, the free versus full pay is separate out of that, so how do, how do, how do, how does that number? Where does it come from?
Yep, so on the general fund side, we actually have a budget that shows there's gonna be a, a transfer of funds from the general fund over to this LEAP fund in order. To subsidize that program as it is, um, that's averaged anywhere from. Our lowest was. In the last five years was one seventy-five, um, so we only contribute as much as we need in order to make LEAP whole.
But that, and thank you for that, but I mean, where does, why are we in the red, basically, where does that, what are we? Where does the hundred and ninety-four thousand come from?
So in other words. What is that, you know? If the program, you know, were to, um, fully be able to, you know, uh, maintain on its own. What would have to be raised or, you know, increased or?
It's either increasing fees to students and parents and not subsidizing it. Or reducing expenses, people, supplies.
It's all right here, and we just went through this, like, in, in our bond, I mean, in our budget discussion, but the detail I appreciate, you know, some of these, can you actually share that? Whatever you're looking at with us, like those numbers, so I don't have to write them all down.
And Cindy, I, to Erica's question, by implication, if it's coming from the general fund, it's coming out of. An opportunity to spend it in classrooms or whatever, whatever else the general fund can fund at this point, right? It's being redirected to cover that shortfall.
Cost containment, you know, at the elementary level, actual costs, um, there's very little for officials. But when you start getting into the middle school, um, you know, just think of what an athletic program looked like ten years ago, I mean, you have the cost for. Game workers and officials and coaches and those types of things that are M, anything MHSAA, um, if it's not, um. Um, MHSAA. Sport, then there are, um, coaches that are paid, but the amount is minimal as far as.
Clarify, LEAP is not MHSAA. I see, and, and none of this applies to high school.
There are, yeah, there are some rolling, like those types of things, um, do go through here, but, um.
That's an outside organization.
So are there any other questions besides what I've provided?
Now, the student support network, you've covered or you're going to move on to that?
Um, so in regards to that, because Katie was just here last, um, last month or a few weeks ago for that, um. Past meeting, I'm not gonna go ahead and, uh, repeat everything that she talked about, but just some of the high level stuff. Um, last year, we collected a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in grants and donations, we spent approximately thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, for providing those things like John talked about with SSN, um, subsidizing the fees, the cost for equipment, the sunshine bus, those. Those types of things, um, what I think is gonna have to happen going forward based on those funds, um, is figuring out. How those are going to be allocated, some of the grants and funds that we've received from donations are restricted in ways that they can be spent, so. Um, if we're sitting on money in the account, it has to be reserved for those purposes, so making sure, um, those are covered. But I know Katie has a really good plan of, um, how she allocates her funds for SSN, so she's, as she mentioned here, she's very frugal. She's gonna first go out and figure out, is there a way that, uh, another partner can go ahead and pay for the costs related to whatever's being. Requested of her, um, she's gonna go to PTO, she's gonna go to a booster second to figure out if there's funding available for them, and then she'll. Go into SSN and say, okay, as a last resort, these are funds that we're going to take from our account to be able to use for our purchases. To remove the barriers that, um, we've all talked about are important to implementing our SSN program. Um, her, her actual salary is, as she mentioned, is covered mostly by grants, we do have. Um, ten percent or roughly half a day a week of her time that's, um, paid for by general fund. Um, so when we talk about an SSN program as it is right now, that's the, that's your cost, your cost is ten percent of her salary. Um, so anything else above that is covered currently by grants and then funding would be able to be used for those designated purposes. Or through the programming and the, um, requests that she receives for requests in the upcoming year.
Which I do wanna address that, so the, so essentially that's McKinney Vento that we often talk about, the federal grant, she is our. Um, region liaison, five county, to coordinate all of that with all of the other school districts, all that. Um, and, uh, we were very, very worried about McKinney Vento being cut, I still personally haven't heard. In the, in the federal dollars that were released, if McKinney Vento was a part of that, have you heard Sandy or seen anything?
We did get a notification that funding for that is supposed to be forthcoming. Yeah, the next year.
That is, so that, that's a huge relief, good news, like we, we were pretty convinced that Title Two. Um, you know, anything beyond Title One really was gonna be cut, and so when that, when those, uh, billions were released here just this, uh, past week. Um, we're, we have that with McKinney Vento, but, you know, just.
Direct pay or does that go through the state?
Go through the state, go through the state, it's part of our federal, it's a part of our consolidated app and all, all of those. Components of our federal and state program that, that Jesse and, and, um, Sandy work on, that, all of that funding with that, but. You know, so, so Katie just. that, all of that funding with that. But, you know, so, so Katie just does a wonderful job, like I say of, you consider ten percent of her job really is, is, you know, you, is funded from our general fund. Um so if we ever do lose that, so when we talk about advocacy and when we're ever talking to federal legislators, McKinney Vento is a big one because man, do we stretch that, you know, to the needs of the kids in the region and kids here in T-Caps.
And what's that amount too?
Seventy?
Seventy thousand?
So less than a thousand though.
And the, the issue with losing the federal funding for McKinney Vento is it's still a state, it's still a federal mandate. So we still have to do the work. We just wouldn't receive the funding to do the work.
Mm-hmm, it's a mandate, mm.
Yeah, so. Vital, vital, vital to providing to our kids.
But the state is required to pass that through dollar for dollar from what the state or the feds allocated.
I wouldn't say dollar for dollar. They normally have a, like a three percent uh indirect fee that they do, they use to pay for their consultants and stuff at MDE, you know, um. Little, the dirty secret of our State Department of Ed, having worked there, is that about ninety, ninety-five to ninety, ninety-five percent of all the funding for MDE is, is taken off those federal dollars. Um when I was there, there were only ten people at MDE paid fully from state funds. So that they take the set aside of Title One, Title Two, Title Five, McKinney Vento, all that. And that's how often they pay for all this.
Which has merit to it because they're actually doing the work.
Oh, I understand, but-
It's much like when we oversee grants too, we have an indirect cost because we still have to apply for the grants, request the funds, submit the application, do the budget amendment. So we still have to do the work, so there's still overhead related to it. So I don't know if ninety, ninety-five percent is the right number, but uh it, it's realistic to say they have work associated with it.
Just a matter of how they assign that overhead.
Yeah.
Okay, and I didn't mean to interrupt your Student Support Network. And we're I used to be on the board at Women's Research Center and we used to talk about allocations per person or client served. Do you have, and that may be a dirty trick to do it to you now, but of the money we spend, how many students do we serve with that?
Hundred, fifteen hundred? We did, we just did this a few weeks ago.
Yep, the annual report said that she um served fifteen hundred and twenty-five students. So that may be a child receiving multiple-
It's a unique student, but yes.
It's the number of its actions.
Total student, still, total students served, you know, which is roughly half of our economically disadvantaged kids.
Yep.
What about LEAP? How many students are served?
I don't know that number. Sorry, sorry.
You, John just gave that.
Middle school wise, it's right around twelve hundred across the district.
I think it's around five thousand total.
And it's just nice to sort of break down what we spend based on, on a per student allocation.
We'll get that number of total LEAP.
I have s- uh athletes. We did the at, the total athletes.
Middle, middle school is right around twelve hundred. But, well, like the elementary, I haven't asked that, but I'll, I'll ask for that.
And they used to, I, I saw a report from the Health and Wellbeing Committee last year, Jason came in. But I mean, that's part of like the, I mean, part of my issue with, uh, uh, it seems like we're kinda talking about the field house right now, but that was part of my issue about-
We're definitely not talking about the field house. We're clearly addressing SSN.
Kind of we are. I mean, we're talking about LEAP, um which we just approved in the budgets like a month ago. We just talked about Student Support Network two weeks ago. Um so that was my issue. I'd also, like, how many students are we serving? How are they being served? How are they benefiting? Um so, I mean, I look at that.
substantially because originally when it was cut back in, was it two thousand sixteen, Scott? Um it was a five hundred thousand dollar expense to the district, so it's grown exponentially.
Yeah, I, I didn't go back that far, but in twenty nineteen, the LEAP budget um was, or the total expenses for LEAP in twenty nineteen were five hundred and seventeen thousand, so.
Yeah, and again, the purpose for talking about it here is that's sort of what this subcommittee's supposed to do is to vet numbers on these so that when we get to our strategic planning discussion, that at least that information will be there. So if we're making choices, we know what the implications are.
I guess one question is if, is if, if this body has oversight over the Students and Net, you know, Support Network, cause I think we're sitting on ninety grand of revenue. Um and I appreciate that Katie's frugal. I love it. Um but again, you know, and, and Katie's deciding how dollars get invested. Maybe next budget time, it'd be nice to have a, a fund around the Student Support Network um in here, if possible.
Like an itemized budget?
I mean, something, just some, something. I think it'd be great for the community as well. Um.
Mm-hmm.
We, we provide that in our original budget, correct? By?
Her, her fund is not, or her budget isn't ran through a separate fund, which is one-
To one defense, it hasn't been very big for like, this is the biggest we've gotten, you know, so I agree, and especially with Ginger's work.
Right.
You know, with, with the community kinda report out, like, like one of the things I think we might do Ty as a part of Ginger's work is, is really kinda show the community and maybe do a report on what, you know, we're able to do and what we're providing and all that kinda stuff. You know, as I've said before, like, we haven't been all that transparent because we just haven't talked about, you know, the, the need for our parts, cause but I think that, you know, it's time to let people know the realities of what we have within our community and that. So I think by telling that story and having a little bit more of an annual report, like of what we, you know, provide, what we need still, that, and I think that we can have that a part of that work that, you know, we're trying to do with, with uh philanthropy and, and that work.
And the impact of, to Scott's point, you know, around goals of the strategic plan, you know, not just outputs and kids served, but you know, student success, graduation rates, et cetera.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, the program has changed so drastically just in the last three years, so I think.
Yep.
Katie did utilize a lot of the ARPA, the SRA funds in this year, so she didn't have to dip into those donations that we received this year, knowing that strategically and long term, she needs to go ahead and figure out how to utilize those dollars to impact kids.
All right, and you know, the other thing that's important is as the federal government decides what they're going to do with educational funding, um it, it probably is not gonna get a lot better, so we're gonna have to be even more aggressive trying to get grants and or allocating more of the general fund to some of these services. That's why, only reason I asked about cost per student, just so we can get a better gauge on that.
Well, and um like we talked about earlier, that McKinney Vento is a big part of it. Now, the only thing that would change a little bit if we didn't get the federal grant is we wouldn't have to oversee the five counties, but there's still specific T-Caps work associated that, with that, that we need an employee to oversee. So that would be a direct hit to general fund if the federal grant didn't come through.
Okay, any other questions for Sandy? Thank you, Sandy, very much. Um upcoming district purchases.
Yep, just uh, it's attached in your packet at the end. I always like to review this to see if there's any questions early on. Um the uh facility staff has a, a facility annual budget from our bond for facility and custodial equipment. Um I know they are right now gathering their inventory um to provide um something to bring to the board either in August or September as it relates to a purchase coming up. Um they are being pretty frugal with those funds right now, not knowing exactly what's gonna happen with the filter first requirements and if there's any additional funding coming our way. Um there is a potential that they just simply won't have enough in their allocation to be able to fund all of that work, but I think that's a couple of years out. So we're just kinda watching it right now. Um the um bid for some renovations here to prepare for Central Grade and possibly Central High F-Wing, um I say possibly because we are looking at some other options of potentially, um from a safety and security concern. Um Patrick and I have a high level of concern of having central office staff at a high school, which is more likely to have an event of an emergency and not having those people available to participate in uh dealing with the emergency itself. So um Dan, Jesse, John, and Tammy are uh crucial to our planning for reunification, re- reunification, running the district, the rest of the district if there is an event. And having them at a high school, which would be more likely to have an event, um is a huge risk to the district. Um and it's something that really didn't, I didn't think about until I went to a conference and heard from others how, especially Oxford, how a lot of their central office was locked into the high school and it fell on two people to run the district. So I'm particularly interested in this because it would fall on Connie and I. And I just don't think that's enough support for our district to do a proper job with all the planning we've done. Um so I'm very concerned about relocating them there, so we are considering other options um that I've been working with Dr. Wagner, Dr. Van Wagner on, um and we'll be bringing some more information um as we work with the architects on that.
By them, you're referring to?
The communic- um communications, um curriculum instruction, yeah, superintendent's office. That's it, right? Yeah, those three. So those are-
Jesse would be out at Saban. They're not going to Central?
They were going to Central.
Okay.
So, yeah, curriculum instruction, uh communications, uh fund development, and superintendent's office, we're all planned to go there. And again, communications, again, really don't want her left in Central High School in the men of, in an event of emergency and not have anybody to do communications for the district. So i- it's a high level concern for us and we'd like to have the board consider other options, so we're working on something to bring forward pretty soon.
We can put a mobile home up on Fourteenth Street or something.
Hey, John's fine with that. He worked in a portable teaching for many years, so.
I did, I taught in a portable.
Went to school on a portable at Central High School at one point.
So did I.
So we, we think we have some options, especially with some of our um budgets for projects coming in a little bit lower. The bid's coming a little bit lower than our budget, so um we'd like to take a stab at working at something that um John's comfortable with and, and bringing it to the board for consideration. Um otherwise, we will be going out to bid for the work to be done at Glen Loomis to prepare for Central Grade. Um it'll be coming out soon, even though the work is gonna be kinda staged. We'd like it to come out soon so that they can start working on the cafeteria and kitchen renovations that are needed for Central Grade. And that's already empty, so they can start that work. The rest of the work they wouldn't be able to do until we're out of this building, removing some of those partitions for offices, redoing the gym floor. Um so we really want to be able to go out for bid right away so we can work on the kitchen, but we still wanna package it together for efficiency and effectiveness, so.
The capacity of the school, of this?
Um I think there was three fifty when Montessori was here, but I, it has higher capacity depending on decisions you make with room choices.
So in terms of moving kids over, we eliminate, we put TAG somewhere else?
TAG and preschool are elsewhere and we can completely fit their JK through five program.
Just curious.
Yep. It's been something-
Curiosity, it's gonna come to fruition real quick here.
But it's been part of our long-term facility planning too, knowing, you know, back when they had seven hundred and twenty-five students, we have intentionally, not only just for uh relocation here, but because the desire would be to have five hundred or less students at an elementary school, we've been intentionally controlling some of that schools of choice, open enrollment population and special programs. We used to have a lot more special programs operating on those, that building, and we've kinda moved those to other buildings. So we've been working on that to be able to fit them here, and it's always been the plan that TAG and preschool wouldn't fit.
So for short term, is this gonna remain a school of choice or is it gonna be just this, that enrollment district?
You know, we, we, we look at it with a very fine, you know, comb of um sections. Um so I know that uh Eric has had the chance, he had the chances here to sit with, are, looking at our sections with mission-based budget and that. So we try to really say, okay, here's what we know we have and, and look at a class and go, okay, what enrollment room do we have? Making sure we have room for kids that move into the, that enrollment area.
Right.
And so we have lot limited down, where before it was kinda like, keep them coming. If you can get another section, keep them coming. And we really changed that and really have had to do that e- at Eastern, at Willow Hill and Central Grade to make sure that we just don't have an influx. You know, you, you do have, you do have situations sometimes where people wanna be in town constantly, but it does come to the detriment of our, our farther, you know, of buildings and that. So the reality is, is we, we've needed to do that to maintain the sizes of those schools, all, each for different reasons. Um and uh, and so-
Plus building capacity.
Yes, and so that's what we've taken the approach the last couple of years with Central Grade, you know, to make sure that we wouldn't run into an issue here.
And we have probably about twelve years of data, data showing that in-town schools are very popular. Unfortunately, it's dwindling some of the neighborhood schools, but it's uh, it's choice.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I'm just gonna comment quick that I, one, I appreciate this being in the, I'm looking at the public packet, so thank you for including um this in the public packet. And we know, I know that this is uh, this, this table has to do with twenty twenty-four bond dollars. Um, um so if we're just talking about large upcoming projects, I, you know, for transparency and just building public trust, I, I, I recommend adding the field house to this. Um it could be TBD, it could be twenty twenty-six, whatever.
Well, the, the field house construction itself hasn't been approved just-
But the design has, and, and here there's things with design, or, or if we wanna talk about diet, like on the departments, like I'm looking at the upcoming bids and current bids on the, on the facilities webpage. I think just ways, whenever the, whenever, whenever that vote happens, even though it's not coming from twenty twenty-four dollars, just to add it in there, I think would be helpful, even though it's not.
Yeah, it's not a bid, so we've always kinda strictly shown bids.
On the, on the RFPs and bids spreadsheet, yeah.
Yeah, the services with um TMP isn't a bid per se, so that's why we took it to the board separate.
So like, that we have like the, the greenhouse, the Central High School greenhouse TBD, TBD grant listed on the table.
Yeah, that's actual construction that would have to be approved by the board through a bid process. That's been our trigger, is be approved through the bid process and the field house architectural work, it's already been approved, so it's off the table.
But it was never on the table either.
It was. Central High, the field house?
Was on this table?
Yes.
The public table or the one on the website on the webpage?
The one that's shared with you monthly.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if the dollar amount was attached, cause I don't think I knew it at the time, but it was on here.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And I will, I will double check, cause I could be wrong, but I will double check and let you know. Yep. It typically, once it's passed, it's off. And I would have the field house on here if we were talking about the construction phase now with an estimated budget, but we aren't and that hasn't been approved, so it's not, it's not in the next six to eight months. Um the reason some of the really big projects are on here is because they're so visible and because we've been taking it to the board quite often. Like Central Grade's more than six months out, but it's a big number, and so we like to keep it in front of you.
Yeah, and seventeen million's a big number too, potentially. I mean, I guess the other one, like I, I appreciate that West Middle School renovations is on here for two and a half. And I think like even just they highlight it yellow, cause it used to be two million a couple of months ago. I think just for us, like, oh, here's a little change. But I'd also list all of the, the music renovations, the four and a half that we provided guidance, right? Same thing that we did with Central High School and, and Central Grade. Um right, we provided some guidance at that one board meeting where they all sat down here.
Yeah, but we're not in any type of phase to do those projects, so it wouldn't be, it would completely change the, the function of this, which I'm happy to have you discuss what you'd like.
I just think for transparency and upcoming, so there's no surprises. We know what's coming, then we know what we're talking about. But you're right, maybe that's not the scope of this table.
Yeah, that's not what this was designed for, but if, if the board as a whole would like me to do something different, I'm totally open to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, uh, and, and I will agree with Ty that i- if it's money that's been formally allocated for an expenditure as a, as a bond and a capital expenditure, even if it's for drawings, maybe it's worth this having. I, again, I don't know what we're talking about in terms of the aggregate number of those, but having it on here for transparency for, I, I, you know, we have formally said we will go ahead and allocate seven hundred thousand for drawings.
Six fifty. Yeah, this, I, maybe potentially we talk about a different document. This is to show you what's coming to finance.
Yeah, and this is newer. This isn't something that we, I mean, this is ready, I mean-
I've done this for decades.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, um, I've never had it on there as an item, but we, in the past, had a lot of questions if I didn't talk about it, so I just talk about it in case there are. But this is to provide finance committee with things that are coming, so that if you see something you don't want us to work on, it brings it to your attention, and there's a conversation to say, stop doing that before I start spending money on design. That's what the intent of this was. Again, happy to have a conversation about something different or additional, if you would like.
Well, let's talk it through.
Okay.
Let's just see, there's another table, and again, I'm not looking to provide you a, a lot of additional work, but-
It, it isn't, it isn't much. I just don't want to, I'd prefer not to change the purpose of this, but I am happy to do another document that shows everything, um much like we gave it a report out already. Here's what you guys have already allocated. It was a pretty big number out of the whole one eighty, right? That's in uh board meetings, it's been published in board meetings, but if you want that document on the website somewhere, I, I think if the board discusses that with Dr. Van Wagner, we're happy to provide it.
Yeah, and I appreciate the document that is on the website, like the facilities website, like I'm looking at it right now and, you know, classroom partitioning, the stuff we've already talked about, the, the circulation and then classroom relocation. So anyway, I, I just think more transparency is the better, especially things that have been voted on like seven days ago with the public. I kinda forgot about it. It just a ways, especially as we start putting things in public packets, like, I don't know, somebody might read it. Somebody might watch this meeting. I don't know.
Yeah, so if you guys have a, I, I, I don't think it's unreasonable for that. I mean, it's, it's real in the sense that we're asking for sp- Yeah, so if you guys have a, I, I, I don't think it's unreasonable for that, I mean, it's, it's real in the sense that we're asking for specific engineered drawings for. The fieldhouse, and it could be the same for central high school, I, I, whatever, I, it, that's. It's in our expenditure now, so we ought to at least account for it publicly, if we can.
But I, yeah, and but I understand what you're saying, I mean, the title of this is upcoming district purchases, so to put on the fieldhouse. The seventeen million doesn't make any sense because it hasn't been voted on, it's not been approved or not moving.
It's not coming anytime soon.
Right.
But again, uh, if you wanna work with Dr. Van Wagner, I'm happy to do whatever is requested.
And I don't want a lot of needless, I don't want pages and pages of detail because we suddenly opened this can, but.
I'll talk to Scott and ask him to, you know, have conversations with board members to.
The only number that's relevant right now is the money we've allocated for engineered drawings, cause we don't know what the other number's gonna be.
You won't, you won't get a good budget until you have design development on.
Okay, um, we're gonna do a second public comment, is there anything else that anybody would like to get onto the floor at this point? Okay, we are adjourned.